Good evening and thank everyone for coming here for an important discussion. My name is Stephen Book, I'm a resident of East Montpelier, and I'm also on the East Montpelier School Board. My purpose here tonight is to open the meeting. In fact, I have a script that I have to read from. And I will take the meeting to the point of electing a moderator, and then the meeting will be turned over to the moderator. So, for those of you that are familiar with these types of school board meetings, and I'm familiar with, there's no one to run the meeting and tell you to have a moderator or a chairman. So, again, I apologize if I'm looking down, but I'm reading from a specific script. The legal voters of the Washington Central Unified Union School District comprising the voters of the towns of Berlin, Callas, East Montpelier, Middlesex, and Worcester were notified and warned to meet at the U-32 auditorium on February 19th at 6:00 p.m. to conduct the business included in that warning. I declare that the organizational meeting of the Washington Central Unified Union School District is open at 6:05 p.m. Welcome to the organizational meeting of this new district. The purpose of this meeting is to elect district officers, swear in the Transitional Board, and give the Board the powers and duties it needs to conduct its business. You'll also be asked to decide whether future votes will proceed by Australian ballot, and to consider other questions related to issues that only the voters can decide. The voting procedures. To vote on articles from the warning, you must be a registered voter in the town of Berlin, Callas, East Montpelier, Middlesex, or Worcester, and pass through the checklist at the entrance. There, your name will be checked against the list of legal voters of each town, and receive a voting ballot. And the voting ballot, I believe, is of yellow pieces of paper. That you will show during the voice vote from the floor or deposit at the ballots box for the vote by paper ballots called. The paper vote is requested, you will be given instructions on the procedure. Non-residents and residents of the town who are not registered voters of the town may not vote, but may be allowed to speak with the approval of two-thirds of the Assembly. During the voice vote, we request that non-residents please remain silent. Additionally, you may not raise your hands or stand if a physical count is required. We appreciate your cooperation. Minutes are being recorded for this meeting. All motions, remarks, and discussions should be addressed to the moderator. Anyone wishing to address the Assembly, or anyone responding to questions from the floor, must state his or her full name and speak so that comments may be heard by the entire Article 1, to elect a temporary presiding officer, what we refer to as a moderator, and a clerk from a qualified voter. It will address the moderator first. Nominations are now in order for want to serve as the moderator, or there are other nominations.
Want information? Is this on?
No.
Alan Gilroy, Town of Worcester, point of information. I'm really confused how many people we're electing, and how long they will serve. We are to, first of all, in this article, elect a temporary presiding officer. It doesn't say moderator, so I don't know what that means. And it says a clerk. And then, in Article 3, it says we're going to elect a moderator, a clerk?
A moderator, a clerk, and a treasurer. Are the temporary presiding officer and moderator the same? And is the clerk that we're electing in one going to also be the clerk we will be asked to reelect in three?
So, the temporary presiding officer and the moderator are one and the same?
The temporary presiding officer who we're about to elect will also become the moderator on the number three? Is that what you're saying, Stephen? Well, I think you do too, but it's very confusing. I just want to make sure we know what we're voting on when, so that we later don't get into a tussle about who we were voting for, which article.
Okay, I see your point and understand it. So, Article 1 is to elect a temporary presiding officer.
And what is a temporary presiding officer? Is that you right now?
No, it is not me. I haven't been elected.
What will a temporary presiding officer?
The temporary presiding officer, according to the agenda, will take us through Article 3.
So, does that mean the temporary presiding officer will not be able to be a candidate in Item 3?
I can't answer that question now, because there hasn't been rule or order decided yet. I apologize, but I'm in no way a spokesman, and I have absolutely no authority to make any decisions whatsoever.
And I apologize for not trying to figure this out sooner, but as I read this about four times this afternoon, I just was terribly confused about what, who we're voting for when. And I hope somebody can clear that up.
But, to make sure we follow the agenda, we are electing... The point that I'm taking us to is to elect a temporary presiding officer. Once that position is elected, and that person will continue the meeting.
Hey, Stephen. Kyle Landis-Ranello from Middlesex, and I nominate Susan Clark, the Town Moderator of Middlesex, to be the temporary presiding officer and clerk for this meeting.
John Bravant, Town of Callas. I would second that nomination.
Another nomination.
Matthew DeGroot of Worcester, I nominate Paul Hanlon of Worcester, temporary presiding officer.
Do I have a second for that as well?
Gloria Diaz from East Montpelier, I would second that nomination.
You have two nominations, are there any others? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. What I'll do is go with a voice vote first.
Do we have a discussion or questions, please? Michael Duane of East Montpelier, we have a question.
So...
Michael Duane, East Montpelier, here as an individual, and also serving as East Montpelier Town Moderator until next election. Just had a question, and we're all friends, trust everybody. We're all friends. I was standing outside handing out agendas, and I saw Paul Hanlon and Bill Kimball walk down the hall about 45 minutes ago, speaking to each other, went somewhere, came back a half an hour later. I'd like to know what Bill and Paul were talking about. Thank you.
So, I find myself in an awkward position, because there are no rules established other than selecting nominees and voting for them. And I don't have the author... I have no authority other than to call for nominees, get the names, and call for vote, and then turn it over. Would it... So, I'm a little off-base here, but would it be appropriate to ask each of the nominees to perhaps make a short statement?
Susan.
Yeah, I sense consensus on that. So, if Susan and Paul could each make a brief statement about their interest in serving as a temporary presiding officer. You could use either that microphone, or if you can bend this one, you can come here. So, Susan seems to be coming first. Oh. Or you can take this out.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for the confidence of the nomination. And I am happy to serve if that's the will of this group. I'm also happy to participate if you choose someone else. I'm the Town Moderator of Middlesex. I have studied town meeting a lot, I've written a couple of books about local democracy. I'm very interested in facilitating the will of this body, whatever that might be. I suspect you're going to go the same thing for the next guy.
I'm Paul Hanlon, I'm the moderator from Town of Worcester. Been that for 25 years to mark. I was asked if I would consider running for moderator by Matt Gruke. And when I arrived tonight, Bill Kimball and I, and Colin Neal, who's the attorney for the district, sat down and talked about Robert's rules. So, that's what our discussion was about.
Thank you. So, nominations are closed. You've heard a brief statement from each of the nominated persons. Susan Clark spoke first, so... And again, it can be voiced, but also if you wouldn't mind holding up your yellow cap, all those in favor of electing Susan Clark as your temporary presiding officer signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, say no.
No!
All those in favor of electing Paul Hanlon as your temporary presiding officer signify by saying aye.
Aye!
From my position, I see Susan Clark as having the majority of the votes. Is the assembled group comfortable with that observation?
I call for a division of the House. Who asked for that?
My name is Matthew DeGroot of Worcester, I call for a division of the House.
Matthew, at this point, all I can either do is a voice count, or a ballot count, where people actually turn in their yellow cards and we count them.
This makes you stand up.
I can't stand up.
You can, but everything else.
Oh, okay. Or, yeah, we could ask people to stand with you. Yes, Matthew?
Generally, in my experience, the House has shown by standing. It can be done in different ways.
Okay. So, we could ask to do the vote by standing. Before I ask people to stand, would it be acceptable to the Assembly that I ask Susan and Paul to help me count votes?
Ask the Town Clerk.
Would Town Clerks be willing to...
We also have J.P. Harris, that's a lawyer.
Quiet, please.
J.P., we're also here. Justice of the peace is... That's their job.
How many justices of the peace do we have here?
Stand up.
Okay, put your hands down, please. I want to keep this manageable. I think if five people are counting, that's enough. I'm going to... I requested a clerk from each town assist with the vote.
Because the registered Middlesex, I mean, that's one clerk. So, I think we're going to ask for five justices of the peace to come down and volunteer to count.
I like... Can we just stand and get a clear... For a division before you decide?
If there's a question, why don't we just stand if there's a question?
Question, please, from the House.
If we're meant to proceed with the vote, asking?
My only purpose in asking is to have a clear name with the voice vote. Maybe if we'll stand, it'll be clear, and we have to live with our options.
Okay, so the person making that request would be comfortable with people standing, and then we can see just visually as a group, and again, I'll try to get the decision based on what I see, and if he could proceed from there. So, I would ask that you stand and hold your yellow card. All in favor of electing Susan Clark as your temporary presiding officer, stand and hold your card. Matthew, you could be seated. All of those who oppose, stand and hold your yellow card.
No! No! There's one more candidate.
Just for Paul.
I'm following the exact script that was presented to me.
Sir, excuse me. Peter Hudson, the former moderator of Middlesex and its select board chair. The way this should be done is, the people in favor of Susan Clark should stand, then the people in charge... Excuse me. The people who wish to elect Paul should stand, then you should determine the majority.
Okay, Al, go ahead. We've seen the voters that supported Susan Clark. All in favor of electing Paul Hanlon as your temporary presiding officer, please stand and hold up the yellow card. Can you take a seat? It still appears to me that the majority favors Susan Clark. So, a temporary presiding officer, Susan Clark, has been elected, and my vote is now done. So, I'll kind of... Thank you for your patience.
Do you have what you think?
I hope I do.
All officers of any position in Vermont, have to take a note before they can serve?
It says "any officer" in the state law.
Where does it say that at?
It's Article 58 under the Vermont Constitution. It says... I'm sorry, 56. Every officer, whether judicial, executive, or military, in authority under the state before entering upon the execution of office, shall take and subscribe the following oath or affirmation of allegiance to the state, and also the following oath or affirmation of office.
You know, I have to take one as a school board member. It doesn't say moderator, it says every officer. And I noticed in the warning that these positions are merely the officer. You have a temporary presiding officer. So, that's what I've... Look, I think we're often trying to be nifty tonight. And the reason that some of us are doing it is because this process has gotten very complicated, because rules haven't been followed exactly the way they should have been, and because sometimes rules, as we still have with Stephen, whether we have it yet or never voted, or if it's standing up, they've not been clear even to the people who are supposed to be interpreting them, telling us what to do. So, I don't want to see us make a mistake, and lay this ground for a lawsuit, because the presiding officer was not sworn in. It just seems like a very small matter.
I'm more than happy to take an oath. Do you get to administer it, Alan?
I have a sheet of paper that you can sign.
This is going to be just like Calvin Coolidge, right? His dad, like, swore him in by candlelight. I'm there.
You can have that.
Okay.
I have one too that can be signed. You've got the official one, Rosie?
I shouldn't say I'm happy to sign an oath. I should read it first, shouldn't I?
Read it aloud.
Oath of office. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the office of... This is the one. Of... Oath of office, yeah. Of temporary... What am I called? Temporary presiding officer. For the State of Vermont, and will therein do equal right and justice to all persons to the best of my judgment and ability according to law. So help me affirmation, under the pains and penalties of perjury. Oh, two, nineteen, nineteen... Oops. Didn't do this right. This is... That's where you sign. This 19th day of... Thanks, everyone, for your confidence. And for those of you who didn't vote for me, I will try to earn your confidence. Just a couple of quick reminders. The reminders, we heard a bunch of them, and I just want to go over just a couple more. These are things that Town Moderators are requested to go over. Please, when you speak, address your comments to the moderator. This helps ensure that we focus on the issues and not on personalities, so even if you have a question for another person, address them through the moderator. I'm going to try to make sure that everybody who wants to gets a chance to speak before anyone is called on a second time. Let's see, we went through that one. Feel free to ask questions. I think this group has already shown they're good at that. Raise your hand if you don't understand what's happening, or if you think a mistake has been made. You don't have to be a parliamentary expert, just raise your hand and ask. Here's what I want to do, how do I turn this into a motion, that kind of thing. The rule... The role of the moderators is to help you accomplish your business that you intend to do. So, if you ever feel that the moderator has made an improper ruling, raise your hand. Roberts rules allows for the group to vote to appeal the moderator's decision, which is a simple process, nothing personal. Ensure that the moderator serves the interest of the group. You can end debate by calling the question. I think most of us are pretty familiar with that one. If you feel that the conversation has gone on long enough, you can raise your hand, you need to be recognized, and you can call the question. If we do it that way, it does require a two-thirds vote to end debate, so sometimes it's just easier to wait until the debate dies down, so we don't have to vote on calling the question. We can vote in three different ways. We can vote by voice, as we just did. We can vote by division of the House, as Matthew suggested, which is where you stand up or raise, you know, a visual. Or, if we ever want to, we can use a paper ballot, a secret ballot. This is a really important option to know about if you feel your privacy on a vote is important. Any voter can move to vote by paper ballot, and if seven voters in this room agree and want a paper ballot, then by Vermont state law, we'll have one. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Great. I'm going to talk slower now.
Can you also put the mic up? If you can, just close it.
Sure. What's that? Turning up the volume. Okay. How's that? Is that any better?
Yep.
I'll read a brief civil invocation. This is something we do at our town meeting and lots of town meetings across the state. Welcome to this five-town school district special meeting. We've come together in civil assembly, in a democratic tradition that is older than our state itself. We come together to make important decisions. As we deliberate, let's advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let's remember that there's an immense gap between saying "I'm right" and saying "I believe I'm right," and that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people, with hopes and dreams as true and as high as ours. And let's always remember that in the end, caring for each other, for each other, in our communities and together, is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. So, we are on, I believe, Article 2? Yes?
To elect a clerk.
Oh, yeah. What's the story with the clerk?
I think they elected you clerk, because the motion is for both offices.
The motion was for both offices. So, should I be taking notes? Do we have a clerk for this meeting? Can I delegate you to be the clerk for this meeting? I'm just sorry, she was taking notes. Looking to, let's see, somebody who knows about clerks.
She's been hired to take notes for me.
She's been hired to take notes. Unless there's any objection, I'm going to count on you to be the actual official note-taker for this meeting. Thanks very much. Okay, so, on to Article 2. To adopt Roberts or other rules of order, which shall govern the parliamentary procedures of the organizational meeting and all subsequent annual and special meetings of the district. Is there a motion?
To move.
And we'll need you to say your name, so that... For the record.
Barbara McAndrew, Callas, so moved.
Barbara McAndrew, Callas, so moved. Is there a second on Article 2?
Second. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I wanted to clarify, if I could, to move to adopt Roberts' rules. Is that clear?
Yes. Yeah. Second. Okay. Can you just say your name in town?
John Bravant, Callas.
Great. Thank you. Tell me if you don't get folks' names in towns and need them. Okay. So, Article 2 has been moved and seconded. To adopt Roberts or other rules of order, in this case Roberts, rules of order, which shall govern this parliamentary procedures of this organizational meeting and all subsequent annual and special meetings of the district. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no? The ayes had it, and Article 2, to adopt Roberts' rules of order, has been passed. We are moving on to Article 3.
Motion?
Yep. What's the...
Thank you. My name is Michael Duane, East Montpelier. I move at this point that the table and adjourn the rest of the meeting pending the result of the appeal that our school district, and parts of our school district, have taken to the Franklin Superior Court in San Albans, pending the resolution of that case, rather than going forward with the rest of the agenda. So, I'm moving the adjourned meeting to a time... To, excuse me, to an event certain, which would be the resolution of the court appeal at Franklin Superior Court. Anything?
Second, that's it. Second, that motion, Craig Line, Callas.
So, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn, to event certain, meaning until the... Can I sit to get the wording again? The Franklin County Superior Court?
Until the Franklin County Superior Court, rules.
Rules.
I'm amending my motion to... To the judicial process is concluded. To the judicial process is concluded regarding this appeal. I'm sorry. My fault. Sorry, thanks for the clarification. If the case is in Franklin Superior Court in San Albans, my motion is that we adjourn the meeting until such time as the judicial process, which could include any appeals from the Franklin Superior Court, are taken, the matter is resolved. I just feel, I may, that that's the most prudent way to go forward, because if we go forward, disband, dissolve...
Hang on, you can speak to the motion after we get the motion on the floor.
Thank you.
So, the motion to adjourn, it's... So the motion to adjourn until event certain, the event being the conclusion of the Act 46 judicial process is concluded. Do I have that right? And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, yeah, Craig Line, seconded. So it's been moved and seconded. Okay, this is, it's a motion to adjourn is technically non-debatable, but unless there's an objection, I'm gonna entertain debate on this motion using the same protocol as motion to postpone. So what I'll ask you to do is limit your comments to this question of whether to put off this meeting or not. So the idea here is debate shouldn't stray into the merits of Act 46 or anything else. Please stick to whether this meeting should be postponed and to what time.
Would you like to voice an objection to that? I think we should just adjourn the meeting. That's what's involved.
This is... A motion to adjourn to time certain, yeah.
Point worth. My understanding that a motion to adjourn to a time or event certain actually is debatable. It's only a motion purely to adjourn, which is not...
That's, that's what... Yeah, that's what I think too, Matthew, that a motion to, a motion to adjourn is non-debatable, and a motion to adjourn to time certain or, or event certain is, is debatable. And so that's the way I'm gonna rule on this. So I move, so we will open the floor to discussion on this motion. If you wanna speak, you should feel free to raise your hand. We do have some portable microphones. Or if you're bold, like Flor, you can walk right up to that one, but you do need to be called on. We know that standing like that can be a little nerve-wracking for some, so we're also happy to, to have somebody bring you the microphone, preferably not the guy in the wheelchair. That would be great. That would be great. So Flor.
So I would like to know what the consequence would be if your adjourned meeting will be tabled, so a clarification, and also verify if we went ahead with meetings, would that put any... I think there's confusion if the injunction ruled in favor of not consolidating, if this meeting will conclude that ruling from being true.
So, yeah.
So first, I would like to know what the consequences are. If, I believe there's a lot in the room...
Flor states your name for the minister.
So, Flor, the S U is Eastmont Piller. I would like to know what the consequences will be for, if there's any harm for us, table this meeting. And second, I would like to know what is, if, whether, if the judge rules an injunction in favor of no consolidation with going ahead of this meeting, would it conclude that ruling from being true for better reflection? Somebody explain that, if there's confusion in the room about that.
Okay, so Flor is looking for clarification, and I think that we've got a room full of people with opinions, some of whom will probably be glad to offer their, their answer on, on that. You wish, you're...
No, no, no.
Yeah, yeah. So Flor is asking a question, and there's some hand gestures that seem to indicate that people think that the attorney in the room for the S U could respond to that. He's not a citizen of our five towns, so we would need a motion to suspend the rules to allow him to speak. So is there any objection to allowing the attorney to speak? Okay, so that means, since there's an objection, we would require a two-thirds majority to allow the attorney to speak. So, all those in favor, and I'm sorry, what's your name?
Do you want a motion?
Sure.
So, so move to Carla Nairi, Eastmont Piller.
Okay, great. Moved to allow him to speak?
Madam Moderator. Who would request that the attorney speak?
Well, you know, that's a good point. Did Carl?
Somebody in this meeting whose body needs to request that the attorney speak.
You're right.
And we'll decide on whether he should participate.
You're right. I was, I was doing the...
And he also needs to understand what his role is here tonight, so.
Well, what is his role?
Sure. Okay, hang on. We can, we can ask him to explain his role if we allow him to speak. And you, you're absolutely right. I was going with kind of hand gestures that people wanted him to speak, but you're right, we need a motion. And I think, do you wanna make that motion? It seems like you did, or no?
Yes. So move Carla Nairi, Eastmont Piller, to allow the attorney for the school to speak.
So it's been moved to allow the attorney for the school to speak, and is there a second?
Second.
And, your name?
Allison Madelfa-Moister.
Allison Madelfa-Moister. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to allow the attorney to speak. Okay, so all those in favor of allowing the attorney to speak, it's two-thirds majority. So why don't you stand and hold up your... All those in favor, stand and hold up your... Yeah. And all those opposed? It is not clear to me whether that's two-thirds, which is not uncommon. A two-thirds is a hard one to call, so we're going to have to ask our vote counters to come down. We have, do we have, sorry, justices of the peace in the House? If you're a JP and would be willing to come down?
May I just ask a question? Can anybody address the issues about why we would or why we would not want the attorney for the superintendent to just be...
Can you say it on the line so we can help you?
So what, what you're asking for is discussion on the question of whether, of suspending the rules, which is allowed. So would anyone like to speak to this question of whether or not to allow the attorney to address the body? Yes?
Yes. John Rayvan, Town Callis. So I, I'm concerned, as you've already heard, the attorney met with a half, or a half an hour with our superintendent, and he won nominee, which may or may not be appropriate. I spoke with the nominee, it seemed like it was totally not enough. I will say that. But these, but, but, let me finish. Please be polite. So my concern is, there's, we do not know why that attorney is here tonight procedurally. And I would suggest that he explain us why, essentially why he's here tonight, who we vote on this, and what he anticipates his role would be. This is supposed to be a simple meeting, voting up or down the Iverson agenda, and now we have an attorney who have a position on this.
This is Charlie Mariman. So if you can also say, who's hiring him to be here tonight, and who's being paid on? That would be helpful.
He's not gonna be able to say anything unless we allow him to speak.
My name is Charlie Mariman. I'm a resident of the Middlesex. And I'm actually one of the attorneys on the Act 46 cases pending before St. Paul's. You know, I think I support, I voted against it, but I'm a team of my vote, and I'm a vote in support of the attorney speaking. And the reason for that is moneyfold. I'd like to tell you my view as to what could happen, but you must all answer me, since I'm an attorney on the case. I'll be a pro vote of public vote, I've been plus in my hump, and had my opinion this day. So, but you know, careful of that. Be careful of that. I like Mariman being able to err in his own agenda. So is Mariman speaking honestly, or is Mariman, is he, is he, is he BSing? I think, I'm hopeful that you can trust me to be honest, and in the same context, I think I'm hopeful you can trust the attorney from Sheeby for long and then to be honest. He's an officer of the court, and I think he will give us a good view. We don't have to buy it. Attorneys don't know everything, for God's sake. Half the time you lose. So, you know, I change my vote and I say, let's have a talk.
So the motion on the floor is whether to suspend the rules and allow the attorney to speak. We've got a lot of stuff to talk about tonight, and folks, is this what we wanna spend our time on? Is it, yes? Okay, keep going. Flor?
I just need to have him speak again, but as the public, as the public official, to me having an attorney here today meant that I've been asked to comply with the law, and I wanna know what the consequences are of tabled meeting today. And I think that's a resource for all of us, the more information we have regardless in which side of this, we stand, because there shouldn't be sides right now. We're all working towards the same goal. Regardless of the side, the more information we have, the better it is. Otherwise, you know, look at the state of the country right now.
Carla Nairi, Eastmont Piller, I'm a select for Eastmont Piller. When we're going to make a decision, we try to get the information that we need that will help us make the best informed decision, and I trust the people in this room to listen to people who know what they're talking about and who value this.
Are you ready for the question? The question is whether to suspend the rules to allow the attorney to speak. What I'm gonna do is ask each of you to take a section. So, I'll take that section.
All the way to the back?
Oh, awesome.
Yes. If you could take, we have, yeah, we'll each take a section. Yeah, but yeah. We have, so Chris is taking the section. And who is taking the section?
I'm sorry.
I have this. You have that one. Okay. Told me to do that one.
So come up here and see if we count the same.
I'm good.
It looks like we have, so Chris is here, you're doing that one, you're doing this one, and you're doing that one. So if you wanna just pick which section partner we have, you can say your name.
They do this in Switzerland. I've been to Swiss town meetings, they do this. They have a little person on each little section of the... Okay, all those in favor of suspending the rules and allowing the attorney to speak, please stand with your yellow thing in your hand. JPs, when you're done, you can walk right on up here, and then we'll know that the people can sit down. I'm not sure if they're ready yet. Are they ready? JPs? Yes? Are you taking the numbers? Sorry?
Yeah, he's collecting the numbers, so the poll.
Yes.
I mean, I would love to have somebody else do it. Oh, the one?
Well, if you're gonna have two-thirds, we counted the number that...
We'll get it from the town clerks once we get the numbers.
No, it doesn't matter who's here, it's just two-thirds if who voted. So it's, yeah. Okay, so that section.
Does somebody wanna do the calculation?
Yeah, got it. Okay, so, that section is Chris.
This section in the foreground? Section in the back? Section in the foreground here? Section in the back right there? And this section is, she's still counting. Looks like. How'd you do? Twelve thirty. Sorry? Thirty-eight. Thirty-eight. Who has a calculator? Well, do it again. Does anybody have a phone or...
Okay, now return to your stations. All those opposed to allowing the attorney to speak, please stand.
So much clearer this time. I thought it was two-thirds on this one. I just have three for that.
The ayes have it, and we are gonna allow the attorney to speak, and now he can even say his name. Sorry? Vote total. Yeah, the vote total, sorry, was one hundred seventy-eight to fifty.
Now we know attendance.
Except for the people who are like, what? Didn't vote.
Good evening all, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My firm, McNeil, Buddy, and Key represents the Washington Central Supervisory Union, and Bill Kin will ask us, a member of my firm, to come here this evening, really to help out with parliamentary procedure and to help out with questions that arise. So that's, that's really the purpose that I was, that I'm here for tonight. I'm not personally involved in the lawsuit or following it like a lot of you, but not intricately involved. So my understanding of the, of the question before the panel right now is what impact the postponing this meeting would, is that essentially, what impact the, what impact the suit, if you will, with the injunction? I know there's many components to it, but delaying, delaying this proceeding until the conclusion of the, of the court case.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Yes. My name is Colin McNeil. I live in Burlington, and so I'm not a voter or, or a resident here. And so, but my, my take on this is essentially that not being intricately involved in, in the suit is that one component of the lawsuit is an injunction request. I think that whether or not we go forward here tonight, if, if court issued an injunction, that injunction would be followed regardless of the, whether you go forward here tonight. The ultimate endgame of the, of the lawsuit, my take would be, again, when, when that process is finished, you would be obligated to follow whether or not you go forward with this meeting here tonight. There are currently, the legislature has, has acted, and there are by statute certain mandatory things that the statute has directed you to do as, as a body. And I think what, one thing you should consider is that until otherwise ruled by that court, the action of the legislative legislature is valid and legal, and should follow accordingly until otherwise, until otherwise the court has ruled.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is to adjourn this meeting until the Act 46 judicial process is concluded. Is there other discussion?
I'd like to, I'd like to speak to my view on it.
State, state unit?
My name is Charles Mariman, again. I have exposure on one of the terms litigating Act 46. I have a lot of experience in litigation. I defended, successfully defended Act 60 against atomic killings, and was deeply involved in that. I have great familiarity with statutory construction and with this law. What I think we're really talking about here is we don't wanna end up in the position that victory ended up in when Act 60 was passed. Victory. Victory, so ticked off, and you know, all fifty of them, was so ticked off that Act sixty is a different kind of play. So they didn't, they didn't actually institute the education tax in that amount, thus ended up being twice the tax that they otherwise would have paid. They cut off their nose to spite their face, and I don't want to cut off my nose or our nose to spite our face, even though I'm very interested in Act forty-six to go down in the wings. So what is, that's all by way of pre-person. This is what I fully expect to happen. Judge Mello is narrowly focused on this case. We argued our preliminary injunction motion on, on February fifteenth. He, although he asked him to give us a weather report as to which way we was going, he scrupulously avoided that, but he said he would reach a decision very soon. I also know that the administrative law judge, I'm sorry, the administrative judge who's assigning judges to cases like this, that that office is very focused on the policy issue involved in Act forty-six, and that this is a very important case in the state. So they chose Mello, they put him in there, he's working full time on it, and I would bet anybody, ladies don't, that he's going to come out with a decision on the P.I. by two weeks, maybe three on the outside, from the date of our oral arguments. And so what does that, why is that awful to us? If I'm right, that means that we can suspend it, and this cuts a little bit against the motion for that office here, which is to suspend it until this final adjudication. But, and so, back to cutting their nose to spite their face, if you wait until the final adjudication, that could take longer, and it could get us past the July date, July one, two thousand and nineteen date, and could create a lot of problems. What I'd like to see is, perhaps this is an amendment, get a little fuzzy on this, an amendment to your, to your, to your motion, that we suspend it until a date certain that the judge reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction or motion to stick with which we have filed on the board. Thus, if he rules in favor of us quickly, thus be the, us.
I'm sorry, point of information, if I could.
Yeah.
On which side are you litigating?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm playing Act forty-six. I'm playing its attorney.
Yeah, I don't know your, your, the Attorney General's office.
No, it used to be, not anymore. So, yeah, no, I'm sorry about that. Ego-centric, I thought everybody knew that. Yeah, so if we, if we, so if I'm right, and I, like I'm right, if I'm right, we suspend it for, for, until a date certain as opposed to an event, yeah, until, until that's certain of the decision on the P.I., if we get a stay, then we've avoided the kerfuffle that we'll have right now. If we lose the stay, we'll still be able to go forward with this meeting based on the fact that we had adjourned it to that date certain. No harm, no foul. Make sense of me?
So your amendment then Charlie is to amend the motion to adjourn, to read, the motion to adjourn until the Act forty-six judicial process reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction?
Right, let me be very clear on this. If the P.I. issues by Judge Mello, it undoubtedly will be appealed to the Supremes. But if it's issued, it will be the law until such time as either the Supreme's reversal or found. So, so that's why we only need to go as far as Mello to, to get at this.
So there's a motion on the floor to amend the original motion?
Could you clarify the date that you think that will happen? Since we want a date in this year, then, because they have provided you to go on endlessly endlessly.
I think that's a sensible idea, but the process, okay, so in answer to your question directly, we had oral arguments on the fifteenth, we filed a lot of cases before that, no post hearing, memorandum, and these were filed, so all the stuff before, all we have to do is dig through and try to take it out. My expectation is that you will rule in two weeks from our hearing, outside of three. So what does that mean? Fifteen, fifteen, twenty seconds to first, outside the eighth would be my, so if it works the eighth, that's when I expect that you will rule.
But Charlie, just to be clear, your motion is not date certain, it's event certain?
Oh, right. And that's, that's the only reason I did it, that's certain, is because what if I'm wrong? What if he rules on the none? Then we suspend it, we're back here still awaiting the decision. One thing I can assert, well, you can't assert anything, but if we're not certain that he's going to rule quickly, he's saying, and it's reported to the court.
So there's a motion on the floor to amend, and so we're discussing the amendment on whether to, oh, yeah, that's right, is there a second? Thank you. So name of someone who seconds? Great, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to amend the motion to adjourn until the Act forty-six judicial process is ended, to now read until the Act forty-six judicial process reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction. Okay, so discussion. Your name and town.
My name is Allison, and my town is Montpelier, and I have a question for, I'm sorry, number. So I'm going through you.
Good for you.
So what Charlie said was, once the P.I. was issued, that would be the law. My question is, what's the law now?
Okay, so that's your question, and unless there's an objection, I'll have Charlie answer that question, at least let's, if there are other people who'd like.
I don't know. That's why I'm in this litigation. It has nothing to do with my feelings about merger, it has everything to do with statutory construction. The words of the Supreme Court is that it's axiomatic that the court, which the intent of legislation decide what the legislation is meant to reach, and the intent of this legislation, in the section that says goals, the intent of this legislation is to assist local decisions and acts that forward the five goals of Act sixty, I'm sorry, forty-six. You cannot follow, you cannot, you cannot encourage local decisions and actions by forcing them to merge. That is not encouraging local decisions and actions. So in my view, the law is that the S.B.E. got it wrong when they interpreted Act forty-six.
Hi, Julio Thompson, Eastmont Pilier. It was observed earlier that lawyers lose half the time in the case. My experience is that when lawyers aren't predicting when judges will rule, both lawyers could be wrong. So I guess the first question is, if it's so certain that the ruling will be in three weeks, then I suppose the question is why not postpone for three weeks? And second, I guess, a legal question is if the judge issues a preliminary injunction, does the Supreme Court have the authority to issue a stay of injunction after the appeal of the preliminary injunction? If that stay is issued, then what the state of the law would be after the issuance of a stay, what the timing would be for that?
So those are questions, are you addressing this to, hoping Charlie will answer those?
Any attorney knowledgeable about the proceedings regarding either this matter or any application for preliminary injunction that might be a deal?
Okay, yeah.
Yes, that, I'm sorry.
Charlie, I'll let you speak, I see another hand as well. Yeah, no, who also is an attorney, so.
Hi. Hi, I'm, sorry. Hey Charlie, you want to try to speak for a second?
Dueling microphones. Mike, do you want to walk up to the?
Have you called on Ruben first?
I had, I had called on Michael and Ruben, I'm sorry, the lights aren't great, I didn't see you. I'd be glad to let you speak after Michael. Thanks.
Let me just, let me just weigh in, please, thank you, since I made the motion. Julio, in answer to your question, if the court in Franklin County issues an injunction in this case, this is just a preliminary injunction, that can be appealed. So let's say the schools who are appealing get a preliminary injunction. The state could appeal that preliminary injunction to the Vermont Supreme Court. The Vermont Supreme Court could either deny the state's request to undo the injunction, or the Vermont Supreme Court could say, we're going to affirm the injunction. So either those two are possibilities. And then the case will, from that point, go forward. My view, if I may, in response to Allison's question, some people think the law is the board's order of November thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, that that board order is the law. And included in that law is the Articles of Agreement, which we have committees working on this. Included in the Articles of Agreement is an agenda that we are looking at this evening. So some people think the, that our district has merged. Now, I happened to see a yellow bus the other day driving by Route Two, and it said Washington Central Unified Union School District. So the buses think that we are merged. And, 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 you know, and the opinion of the superintendent is that, and I think, you know, it was a basis for it, and the agency of education, that the merger hasn't occurred, becomes a board's order, and it needs to kind of go forward, but the Articles of Agreement don't really say that, because we're in this transition process, so the bottom line is, Allison, the law's very unclear. Very unclear. And will the legislature step in then? The House pass something? But that's sitting on the wall in the Senate, really. So the law's unclear, and that's why I made my motion that rather than, you know, that we need to postpone, adjourn this proceeding until we get it more clearly from the court, because the court cases is going away. The only thing that I'll mention in terms of consequences, which was the question, I believe, last night, the Washington Central Supervisory Union had an organizational meeting just like this, and they voted to postpone their agenda, and they, they picked a date. I think the date they picked was like March something or other. So, thank you. So last night, another forcibly, forcibly merged district like ours had an organizational meeting, they voted to postpone and adjourn to a certain date, so what that date would be is a crap. So I think there's another meeting coming up tomorrow night, there's a couple more next week, so, but the law's unclear, but the law's unclear, and that's was the basis for my motion. Let's, let's just not make things more complicated by going forward, etc. Thank you, Charlie, sorry.
So the, the motion, hang on, the motion on the floor, yeah, Ruben, I'm with you in one second, I just want to clarify, the motion on the floor is to adjourn this meeting, sorry, to amend the original motion to, and the amendment is to adjourn this meeting until the Act forty-six judicial process reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction. So we're discussing right now whether to amend it, to add on that decision on the preliminary injunction piece, other, to, to the original motion of, motion to adjourn until Act forty-six judicial process.
Respectfully, I am in a way very patient.
You go, boy, you go. No, Charlie.
Stay as well, deny a stay. My motion was for a P.I. or stay, two slightly different things.
Or stay. Okay.
I have three things. Everybody in this room can read and see that Washington Central Supervisory Union on the side of the school bus is different than Washington Central Unified Union School District. That's my first point. My second point, sorry, Ruben, better for each one first.
Thanks, Ruben.
My second point is that by saying no harm, no foul, as Charlie sort of casually tossed out, it really bothers me that asking the citizens of five towns to come up and have a meeting to do nothing, and asking us all to come out and do that again at some point in the future is no harm, no foul. I respectfully disagree. And I'm super struck over my third point right now. Oh, and I'm, I see very much. I will clarify that there is no confusion about what the law is. The law is Act forty-six. That law, and only Act forty-six, not the law that's in the House right now, is the law of the land right now. We, as elected boards, elected governing bodies, are compelled and took an oath to uphold the law of the land, which is the law of the state of Vermont, which right now, unless and until something changes, is Act forty-six. Thank you.
I am Edith Fernandel from Middlesex. I'm an attorney that's speaking purely in personal capacity.
Clutter?
So, this list of what we're supposed to vote on tonight is, it wasn't created by anyone in our five towns. It's not something that people in our five towns want to do. We're being forced to vote on these things, four of the five towns are appealing that decision, but all five towns, but really we want to keep our vote on boards. And there, there are questions about the consequence of what happens if we vote on these items. One of the things that hasn't come up yet is that there's a meeting scheduled, I believe, for right after this meeting, and then another one for tomorrow for this transitional board that's going to be making decisions about what happens in the schools. And the Supreme Law of the Land is the Constitution, and it embodies in there one person, one vote. This transitional board gives the town of Worcester, and I love you, Worcester, but I think, you only have a little over six hundred registered voters, they give you three members on that board. And the town of Berlin, which has about four times that many voters, has two members on that board. There's no way that is a lawful representation, and I think it's crucial that the courts hear out this appeal. It's very common for agency actions to be appealed. The courts will make a ruling, and I disagree with Charlie's amendment, we need a final order from the Vermont Supreme Court that settles this issue before we give the power to make real decisions in our schools. I have three kids at the Remy Elementary School. We just found out we're losing our principal. We need a new one, starting this fall. Who's going to hire that principal? I know my local school board members, a couple of the, about two new ones are here tonight, I trust them, I want them hiring our principal. But that principal's going to be paid for the next fiscal year, and we're hearing that the transitional board has authority to add. That's not right. The courts need to rule on this. We shouldn't be doing any of the things on this item. We don't have to do any of the things on this list of items, because we still have democracy now, and we should postpone all of this until there's a final ruling from the Vermont Supreme Court.
My name is Richard Kane, I'm a resident of the House. I'm not a lawyer.
Closer to the microphone.
I'm not a lawyer. I'm a resident of the House. But I, I applaud Charlie and Michael, they're lawyers who have actually supported this. My name's Richard Kane, I'm a member, I'm a resident of the House, and I'm not a lawyer, and I thank, you know, Michael, Elaine, and Charlie Neeran, and all the other lawyers, people who, so many agents. You know, I, in answer to the unfairness of calling people back to this, you know, I will come five times out of ten if it occurs, and I didn't like that, that is my obligation as a citizen of Easttown. We have to get this right. This is the law of the land at this time. However, the execution of this law has been, I'm going to be polite, they call it imperfect at the least, and the imperfection is coming from people who are not elected, and this really bothers me. We work very hard to keep these communities base and civil, and this process is driving people to anger and it's splitting our communities, and part of that is because we are losing that piece of. And part of that is because we are losing that piece of democracy that we've all trusted. We have got to get back to that point. And my God, this actually needs fighting. If we are standing up and saying, "No, we're going to look at this and get it right," we need to do that. And if it means standing up in the face of our legislature, we need to do that. But we have to do that. We are the people. They are supposed to be accountable to us. Our superintendents, our secretaries are supposed to be accountable to us. Our voice has been out there loud and roaring for four years, and it has been fallen on deaf ears. I think this, we need to make a statement to these votes. I mean, this is our obligation as citizens. I don't know what chances. I'm frankly not very worried about what they can do to us. They should be more worried about what we will do to them for this representing us.
But just a reminder that the motion on the floor is to amend the motion to adjourn until the Act 46 judicial process is concluded. We would be amending it to until it would reach a decision on the preliminary injunction or stay. Yes.
Matthew, you go from Westbury, and I just have two points.
Nice and loud, Matthew.
Yeah, sorry, I'm losing my voice, so I'll try to stick up. You know, I think that there's a reason why the lawsuit was filed, there's a reason why there's been a lot of advocacy in the legislative to try to ask legislators to amend or change the terms of the law, they need to rescind it. But neither of those things has happened yet. And we are not judges. We are not judges assigned to adjudicate what is fair or what is not fair about the law that's been passed. So I think that when Ruben said, "This is the law of the land," right, he says, "This is the law of the land for the moment," that is the case, that the judge has had opportunity to rule. The injunction has not done so yet. So for the moment, it is the law. It would be an extraordinary thing, I think, for the voters assembled here to put our five towns in a position of saying to the state government that it does not have authority over us in this matter, which is what I would see from the German before conducting business in these ten to eighteen. The second thing I want to comment on is the practical consequences for the school system and for school kids. If we are not to transact the business, we have to. Given the timeline that we have laid out for us, and the legal necessity of morning meetings for electing board members, and a morning meeting for voters to approve a budget possibly, the earliest that we could do that, at this point, even if the act is meant, trying to set dates as early as possible, could, is roughly in the middle of May, that we would be able to pass that budget. So if we delay, let's say a month, then we're getting into mid-June at least, and running through our real estate potential, not having a budget, because the school year starts on July 1st, at which point, my understanding is that according to current law, we're restricted to spending only eighty-seven and a half percent of our current year's budget to support education in our school system for next year. So that would seem to me to be a very real consequence, to have an impact on people who hired to administer and to teach, as well as on the quality of education provided at the education centers of schools. The lawyer, Charlie, has set himself, lawyers have a plan. There's a very real possibility that this track, this merger track, as detested and as tasteful as it is to many, may actually come to pass. So there is some value to us keeping two halves in line in parallel simultaneously, one which, which evinces the law being stayed or overturned, and the other which, which the law went forward as it currently goes. Thank you. So we have a original motion on the floor, and then we have a amendment to that motion, whoever got there. So I'd like to move the question on the mened motion, and then it will speak to the amended motion.
Is there a second to calling the question on the amendment?
I have a question.
Yes.
Questions, yeah, it's appropriate in this. The question, I guess, is if the ruling on the preliminary injunction or stay happens, let's say, on March 8th, when is the earliest that a meeting of this nature could then be held? Because that's the question. I'm sorry. What's your question? Not the basis of the debate.
It was a point of information, so I was glad to hear it, but it does sound like a point of information that is about the content rather than the process. So the question has been called, and it's been seconded, on whether to amend the original motion. So right now, what's that? Oh, whether to close debate. Thank you. Thank you. Man, I love having two moderators. Whether to close debate. That requires a two-thirds majority. So what you'll be voting on right now is whether you want to close debate on this question of the amendment. If you are ready to close debate on the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. And we have closed debate, and so now we will be voting on the amendment to the original motion. So the original motion went, it was a motion to adjourn until Act 46, I can't read my handwriting, until the Act 46 judicial process is concluded. The amendment, and you're voting yes or no on this amendment, is to change that to until the Act 46 judicial process reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction or stay. Okay, so if you want that amendment, vote yea, vote aye, and if you don't want that amendment, vote no. All, yes.
Excuse me, a question, point of information. So if I understand what we're, oh, NSCD, Wednesday, September 10. All right, so what we're going on now is whether to approve the amendment, and then we will then make a vote as to whether to approve or disapprove the amendment.
Motion to adjourn.
So the two votes that are in question here, whether to amend, and we still won't or don't want.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. So if you vote yes, the main motion will be amended. If you vote no, the main motion will not be amended, but we will still have that amendment, the main motion to vote on afterwards. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
I had a feeling. Okay, so we'll need our JPs down here again, please, all my trusty vote counters.
Standing votes, sir.
That's what we're going to do. We're going to have a standing vote. Yep, that's a division. So man your stations, stack your stations. We've got one here, one here, one here, one here. Beautiful. Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please stand with your yellow tag. And now, please stand, all those opposed to the amendment, please stand. Hold up your yellow tag. What's that?
Yes, they will.
Okay, so the ayes have it. The amendment passes, 171 to 50. So we're now on the main motion. The motion is to adjourn until the Act 46 judicial process reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction or stay. Is there further discussion? Matthew?
With apologies, I would like to move the amended motion. To read that the date certain would be four business days following a decision on the preliminary injunction or stay. Because otherwise, I don't know when the meeting ends or how it's going to be called. Well, I don't know, Charlie's saying, "We don't have to wait." We said it now, we didn't say that. The date certain makes it so that we'll plug in. We'll plug in.
So the motion is to amend the main motion, so the motion to adjourn until the Act 46 judicial process, no, until four days after, business days following the decision on the preliminary injunction or stay.
And if someone wanted to take a friendly amendment to the act, they could pick a date.
It's supposed to pick a date. It's supposed to pick a date. It's supposed to pick a date.
That's an amendment to the amendment, so first...
Amendment, I think that's very smart. I didn't think of that. The issue, it issues Friday. What, we got the meeting Friday? No, we should have, Matthew suggests some certain number of days, like, sort of issue. So I don't know if this is a friendly amendment or not, except for a much longer term.
So the amendment is, so you were just stating that you were in favor of that amendment? Is that what you're saying, Charlie? Sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so are you seconding?
May I change the amendment to just say March 12? It's Tuesday.
So do you want to withdraw your amendment and restate it? Because it hasn't been seconded, as someone pointed out. Is that what you want to do? I'm sorry, was that a yes or no?
Leaving the motion.
Leaving the motion to four business days following the preliminary injunction or stay. Is there a second?
Second.
Kristen McBay in Middlesex. Okay, so the discussion is whether to, so we're back on that main motion, and now we're looking at another amendment to the main motion, and it would be, instead of when we've, when the Act 46 reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction or stay, it would be four business days following the preliminary injunction or stay. Is there discussion?
Yeah, the motion has been seconded.
I have a point of order. I, please, the mic.
Is that a point of order? Yes. A point of order.
If the person who made the amendment, it just passed, accepts what was just offered as a friendly amendment, it's...
Yeah, thanks. I love the idea of friendly amendments, but when you go to moderator's school, they tell you that it's sort of like something that's only on TV, but, yeah. Yeah, so next in line, that is Craig. Line?
Line is in line. I'm Craig Line from Calis. I have a question about a 30-day warning period required to warn such a meeting. If you've only got four days, it's not properly warned.
This is Kyle with Disparin from Calis. I'd rather, well, I was going to say complications, but it would actually be a celebration, is if the court rules in favor of the four school districts that are here that appeal that decision, then this meeting never gets called. I think it gets pretty complicated. We try to actually set a specific date after the decision, and also the court may put some boundaries on what happens at these meetings. We don't know what that order is going to look like, for instance, what the transitional board can look like. So I think it's much cleaner to just wait, see what the court order is, and then figure it out from there.
Carl, we could be Worcester. I'm just curious if anyone in the room knows how much it costs to hold one of these meetings, and what budget it's being used to fund.
Is there anybody who'd like to respond to the question of how much it costs to hold one of these meetings and what budget it comes from? Maybe it's going to be a rhetorical question. Yes.
I, from Middlesex, I liked the idea of four days after the P.I. is determined. It seemed like a good way around potentially having to delay for so much more substantial period of time due to warnings. I don't feel the nuances of all those things, so with the other people, I was going to make a slight revision that it'd be something like not to exceed seven days to give us all, not exceed 10 business days, to give us all a little bit more time to plan our schedules to get here, so that more of us can get to a new specific day.
Do you want to amend the amendment?
I'm not sure.
Was that not sure, or yes, sure?
I am not sure.
I'm not sure. Okay.
My name's Perry Bernstein from Calis. I'm a member of the Insurrection. I don't know about you guys, but my schedule makes it necessary to have more than four days of something that gets published in a paper. I just think it's ridiculous to set something that, folks. To the member from Eastmont Hillier who thinks we're wasting people's time, I came here to vote to not continue this process. It's not a waste of my time. I took an evening out of my busy schedule to be here to support not working our schools. There are many of us who feel very strongly about it, and I respect other people's opinions, but I'm going to vote for the original amendment as amended with a date, and then we can let the bodies see once the decision is made by the court, when it's appropriate to warn, so we all have adequate amount of time to come back here and vote again to the next one. Thank you.
Julio Thompson from Eastmont Hillier. My concern is that voting to hold maybe four days after a court ruling wouldn't comply with the state of the meeting law, which requires the time to publish a newspaper, the date, place, and the time and location of the meeting. And if the court issues a preliminary injunction, that isn't published in the newspaper, and it's not issued by the legislative body. If there's folks here trying to talk about the legal thing, I'm happy to hear of it, but I'm not an expert on it at all. I'm just reading the second period states, webpages about the time meetings start, and it's pretty clear that it's the legislative body that's supposed to warn, not less than 30 days before a meeting. And the date, time, and place hasn't been suggested here, rather. It's an event that won't be publicized, so I have a concern about that with those voters.
So is there additional discussion on the amendment about the four days amendment, do you want to address? Okay.
My name is Patty Normal from Berlin, and I just wanted us all to remember about the timing. My concern is that if you have to worry, we better do it right, and we need the time to do it right. Right now, Act forty-six is the law. It's supposed to be merged in June of two thousand nineteen. There is a bill that was passed by the House about a week or so ago that gave this body a year's extension. But that bill has to go to the Senate, and the Senate hasn't even taken it up yet, and I don't know what the outcome's gonna be. So I just want people to remember that, we need time to do both.
I'm Gilbert Worcester. I'm reading from the Secretary of State's website, he's the open being handbook that is there. And this is a paraphrase of Watson, the lawyer's gonna put this up if they want, one VSA three twelve C four. Notes on adjournment or continuing a meeting. When a meeting is to be continued to a new time or place, public body should announce the new time and place before adjournment. Otherwise, the subsequent meeting is considered a new meeting. It must be duly warned as above. So in other words, the meeting actually doesn't end. We have the same meeting at four business days after the court decision as we're having tonight. It doesn't have to go apparently through the same warning process.
I, I believe, what you're saying, if I'm right, Alan, is that if we name a date and we're adjourning to times certain, we do not have to rewarn the meeting. However, if we, I think, the, if we adjourn not to times and, and date certain, but to event certain, then we do have to rewarn.
I, I can't answer that. I'm not a lawyer, and if we start, the lawyers talking, Mr., we'll really be here a long time.
I don't know a lot about parliamentary discourse.
Can you?
Oh, my name is T. Indie, from Calis. I was wondering if we could do a either-or situation? Would this be a, until the court makes this decision, or at the latest, say, March fifteenth? Just so that we know we can get the ball rolling, and we still have some amount of time to make decisions. However, we are gonna wait a little bit to see if we know more information by, say, March fifteenth, which gives us a specific date, so we don't have to worry about rewarning.
So you would amend, I don't know if we can amend this amendment, you could try amending this amendment, rather than saying four business days following the preliminary injunction, you would, I think we have to vote this amendment down first and then we have to pick that one up. Or, or vote this one up. Your suggestion, you're the, and so you'll need to stick around to make that suggestion, is to amend the original motion to adjourn until Act forty-six judicial process reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction or stay, or March fifteenth, whichever comes first?
Yes, or whatever business day, I don't know what day it would be, but the day. Then the twelve? Then March, yes, or March twelve, whichever day.
So, hold that thought. We are talking about the four business days amendment. Is there further discussion on the four business days amendment? Seeing none. We will, ready for the question on the four business days amendment. This is, you're voting yes or no on the amendment to take that main motion and change it so that it reads that we would motion to adjourn until Act forty-six judicial process reaches a decision, until four business days after the Act forty-six decision reaches its preliminary injunction or stay. Oh God, I just should have, should have better handwriting. The original motion is to adjourn until the Act forty-six judicial process, I'm sorry, the, the original motion has been amended, you amended it, so the, so the original motion is now motion to adjourn until the Act forty-six judicial process reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction or stay. That's how it currently stands. And the question is whether to amend it to add the four business days piece in. So it would say the motion to adjourn until the Act forty, until four business days following, when the Act forty-six judicial process reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction or stay. So if you like that amendment, you'll vote aye. If you don't like that amendment, you'll vote no. All those in favor of the four days amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, oh, hang on, opposed, no?
No.
The noes have it, and the amendment fails.
I'd like to call a question on the, on the vote that you have now, amended.
The question has been called on the main motion, although we did have some discussion of it in a second amendment that people wanted to do, but the question has been called on the main motion as amended, is there a second on?
Second.
Okay. So the main, the, the question has been called on the main motion. The motion is to adjourn until the Act forty-six judicial process reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction or stay. There's no discussion on this. Everybody understand, a yes vote is for the, the, a motion as amended. Do you have a point of order?
Can you repeat again? From Mel Sacks? I have a question. I'm concerned that by not setting the date certain, we are going to have to rewarn-
The question has been called on whether, the question's been called- Yes, we vote on calling the question. So if you are done talking about this main motion, and you just want to vote on the main motion, you'll vote yes on calling the question. If you want to continue discussion on the main motion, vote no to call the question. Does that make sense? Yes, yeah, yeah, the, the main motion as amended, so it's now our main motion. So if you would like to end discussion and call the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
It's gonna, that's the two-thirds majority, we're gonna have to do it again, guys. Okay, so it's unclear to me whether that's a majority or not, so please, can we have our voters stand here and we're gonna divide the House? No. So stop your station, everybody, stop your station. We are voting on whether to call the question, we're voting on whether to stop talking about the main motion as amended. All those in favor of ending debate on the main motion as amended, please stand with your yellow cards. Okay, and now, all those opposed to calling the question on the main motion, this means that you want to keep on talking about the main motion. All those opposed, please stand. All right, and the results of your vote are one fifty-four to sixty. A two-thirds majority takes one forty-two, so the ayes have it, and we have called the question on the main motion. So the main motion, the motion is, as amended, is to adjourn until the Act forty-six judicial process is, reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction or stay. That is the motion that we are on, and we called the question, so now we have to vote on that.
I asked for written vote.
Paper ballot? So we need seven people who want a paper ballot to raise their hands. There's been a request for a paper ballot, and if there are seven people who want a paper ballot, then a paper ballot there will be. Yep. So, yeah, so the question is, is there an opportunity to vote on or discuss the amendment that was sort of chatty discussed earlier on? And the answer is, no. We are gonna vote on the main motion. If the main motion passes, then it passes. If it fails, it fails. Trying to figure out about reconsideration. Yeah, so I think, I think there may be an opportunity to reconsider it afterwards. But right now, it's the question of the paper ballot. Are there seven people who would like a paper ballot on this article? One, two, three, four. Five. Six. Seven, seven, okay. So there are seven people who have asked for a paper ballot.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
If we vote yes on this motion to postpone the meeting until, and that is certain, if, for example, on March eight, the court issues its opinion as the state or the marriage injunction, with this meeting's rule, what date is that?
It would have to be warned.
So it would have to be warned according to the deal with the meeting.
Point of information?
Yep.
So the meeting would have to be warned. The earliest it would be, would be enabled. The earliest an election of the board has been laid there to an earliest election on, but it is taking longer.
So, yeah, we're, we're calling, yeah, we called the vote, it's true. It was a point of information that turned into a, more. All right, so what we're gonna do now is have, we have a paper ballot that's been called for. And so you're being asked to vote yes or no on the main motion as amended. If you vote yes, then you are in support of the motion to adjourn until Act forty-six judicial process reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction or stay. If you vote no, then you're voting against that.
Madam other?
Yeah.
Rosemary Morris, Burlington Clerk. We have paper ballots at each of the stations, so everybody will use the same ballot. Don't use your own.
Yeah. So these yellow things are not ballots. There are blue ballots, and so I think what we're going to do is you're gonna line up in front of your town clerk, and you'll have your name checked off, and you will cast your ballot. There's been a request that we go by section of the room, what do you think? Okay, so this section, the one closest to the town clerks, go ahead and vote. Everybody else can hang out at your seat. We'll start over here. Okay, the, the, the election officials.
No, I am, I'm an election official.
Bless you. Oh, I see, so they're gonna pick it up and then vote here. If you have voted and you're carrying your ballot around wondering where to put it, the ballot box is up here now, next, next to the clerks. So you'll have to make your way back up to put your ballot in the ballot box. The results of the vote on whether to adjourn, uh, motion to adjourn until the Act forty-six judicial process reaches a decision on the preliminary injunction or stay. In favor, one hundred sixty-eight, opposed, eighty-one. The motion passes, and this meeting is adjourned.